On, do we?
Yep.
Uh, has Jason got on yet? He called me earlier and said he, he might be a few minutes late. But.
Hey there.
He should be on in about ten minutes. Is Janie on?
Ms.
Up there.
Mr. Miller's on there. Dr. Miller's on there.
Okay, I see, uh, what about Sharon Freeman?
Yes.
Joe Tagel?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so tonight, we're going to discuss about the comparison of insurance quotes and the coverage with public risk insurers at four oh four one oh four, and Tennessee Risk Management at four forty-two, one twenty. And they have been a lot of questions asked and answers given. So what is the board's thought on all this? Does anybody want to speak?
Well, they answer, they answer a lot of my questions. I mean, I saw that they answered a lot of my questions. Uh, I, I think we need to, 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 Deanna, what, what's your thoughts on all this?
So, one of the things that I, I think I had a couple of check-in meetings today and two things I have heard from a couple of the board members I had check-in with, meetings with, uh, and I had a couple of phone calls too. Um, one of the things I would recommend is we need to talk with the, um, bus drivers. So I think we need to probably have a transportation, um, meeting or have our bus drivers into maybe a work session, a work session next week. Um, because we need to inform them and they kind of need to be heard as well to help you make a decision. One of the other things the board member had spoke to me about was, um, do we have a legal opinion? You know, we know we've talked to Mr. Montgomery and we think he's given us solid advice, but at the same time, do we have an unbiased, uh, attorney's information? So I do know that one or two board members have reached out to, uh, Ben Torres to ask that particular question. You know, these are our questions, what's legal? And then I think the third thing that was expressed to me by board members is, is it a conflict of interest for one of the companies, uh, that is represented for that person to actually be, uh, a coach? And we do know that he doesn't take any money. I think there's a salary and I think that salary is donated, um, to the school, to that organization. And so we need to, so those are the three things that are on the table. Uh, should we meet and have bus drivers in and get some information and clarity from them? Do we have an honest, uh, legal unbiased opinion, uh, written out from an attorney? And then is there any form of a conflict of interest for one of the groups to be represented by someone who is on our coaching staff that we would like to continue to be a coach?
When one of those questions, Deanna, that percentage of information was that most of the bus drivers didn't have extra coverage, that they didn't have insurance, how can you, I, I thought that that was part of our contract with them, that they had to carry extra insurance. Charlie, can you, uh, answer that? And they said that. Now, am I dreaming, maybe it's the liability they don't have? Is that what it is? They just don't have liability?
I'm not really sure. I don't know of any thing in their contract that requires them to have extra insurance. Um, this is the only thing I could find.
Correct, I was supposed to have it.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, this is page two, number eight of the contract. It says, "Party of the first part shall, during the period of the contract, carry insurance with some good and solvent insurance company in the amount required by the stated Department of Education regulations, um, to identify or protect the party, the second part, against the claim damaged by reason of accident or grow, uh, growing out of the said transportation. It is understood that this coverage is not a commercial errors or admissions policy. Contractors are required to carry workers' comp and employer's liability, which we know that. And they, they either carry workers' comp or they submit a statement to us every year, yearly, that says, I do not, I am not carrying workers' comp and I realize that I am responsible." Because a lot of our contractors are single, uh, either father and son, father, son and wife, just a single owner-operator. So of course they choose not to, to carry that. Now, our bigger contractors, of course, do have workers' comp on their employees. Um, and I thought that would re, when I read number eight, I thought if they had covered Tennessee Risk Management, that that would satisfy that, that they just had to have insurance, because it is a state law. If you have a bus, you have to have insurance. Um, the law just, basically the law says, no school bus shall be operated to transport peoples to and from school unless the school bus is insured for liability and property damage according to the rules and regulations of the State Board of Education. So that's the law on that. But I don't think the contract requires them to carry extra insurance above Tennessee Risk Management.
Well, I guess my thoughts, Charlie, if they were, justice for churches or another event that wasn't school-related, they would almost have to have other insurance.
Right, they do.
I mean, that.
But none of our contractors do that. None do anything other than school-related.
Some of you people that's been on this board longer than I can answer this question. Uh, it's my understanding this Tennessee Risk Management has had the contract with this system for several years. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Then why, all of a sudden, are we doing this again? If it was good last year and year before and year before and year before, why is there questions this year?
It is time to renew the contract. I, I do, I would say that piece. Uh, and I, I do believe that the other organization, just because it's a fair marketplace, submitted a quote. And my understanding is historically, uh,
Don, the way, uh, well, the way I saw it was because of our dairy issues. And to see if we could find a, a better insurance that would be cheaper, that would cover us just as well, but be cheap.
Is this, is this the same thing that's been discussed in years past when this came up? And I always, I, it sounds to me like that, uh, this contract comes up yearly and they've been pretty faithful in, in paying out for what, whatever, uh, the issues that may have come up. And my, just my question is, again, why, why all of a sudden, is there a problem? Has there not been other con, other, uh, companies issuing a bid in years past?
No, there has not been.
What, what, what is that?
We, we had the same company. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go, go ahead, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Under the TERC Act, I mean, I, I was reading about that. I mean, what, what is that? Is that something that changed our insurance or, but, but the, that they went and put into TERC Act or? How, how does that fit in?
That's probably been the law the entire time, but I don't know that there's ever been any attention brought. It hasn't been brought to our attention and it probably was not brought to the contractor's attention. When this other company, um, decided that they wanted to bid, uh, then they brought to our attention the problem with our contract and the, uh, way we are insuring our bus drivers. That was brought to our attention in one of our meetings by the company when they did their presentation. So when, so that's how we came to have that knowledge. And now, let me clarify, and Sandra and Mrs. Windsor and, and Charlie Lee, has thi, has this company or another company not also bid in years past?
This company was brought to us about a year ago, or two years ago.
Years ago.
And two years, was it two years ago, Marcia, that they were at, um, one of the TSB meetings?
Mm-hmm.
So was there a discussion last year about it?
Yes.
Yes, there was discussion. Okay. So that answered, that kind of gives you some understanding, Mr. Wees, that this company, of course, is a free marketplace and they're competitive. So I think there was a con, this conversation occurred last year. And then again, to be fair, because it's on an annual basis, I guess the conversation has come up again.
Hey, uh, Dawn, if, if you will notice on that information we were given today, they, they've listed what we paid the last several years. That at one time we were paying over almost six dollars. And when that company, risk insurers, came in a couple of years ago, they had two different packets. And when they saw that risk insurance package, they were, they suddenly dropped the cost, but they've been charging. You can look on the chart and see they went from five hundred and seventy thousand to down to, uh, uh, right around four. So they dropped it a third. And I felt like at that time, how in the world could we've been paying that much for insurance? And then suddenly, they can drop it two hundred thousand dollars? And I just, I just kind, that just kind of didn't set with me right. Uh, and I thought, we really need to look into it. And then when they came up with this bid this year, um, it would, you know, save us close to forty thousand dollars. And I'm just, ta, that, my opinion was, we need to take a good look at it. And if you look at what we paid to them, you know, over the, these years, hey, oh my gosh, five million, just glancing at it, and they've only paid out a million, all over a million for us. So obviously, they've done alright. You know, they, they've made a good profit.
And we've been alright, maybe, but not having a lot of claims.
True, true.
So the, Mr. Wees, do you see she's referring to quest, the answering question eleven on your packet? Do you see that?
I read, I read all the information there and it's, it, it looked to me like the same information we went over before. Uh, and when they pa, when they put out a bid where there was six hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, whatever the bid was, uh, that's in the past and the board voted to accept that. So if they overbid and the board accepted, that's not on them, that's on the board.
And Dawn, I don't think we had anybody ever bid to about two years ago against them. And then that company, the national bid, but we stayed with Tennessee Risk Management just because they've taken so much good care of us. And it's easier to file claims. I think you can ask Gail or Libby maybe how quick and easy it is to file claims with them and the, and the return you get from them.
That, that was, that was what I understood with, uh, the board had stayed with them because of, of what you just said, Joe.
Yeah.
And the, and comparing the two, when the, when the presentation was given, it sounded like this is not an insurance company where insurance is going to drop you and it was, it's happened to us all. When you have a minor fender bender, your insurance goes up. Regular insurance does that, but Tennessee Risk Management, as I understood it at the time, does not do that. If that's a, if that's not an incorrect, someone correct me on that, please.
One of the biggest reasons on the bus contracts and everything that's been coming up too is because of the rent, I think, that they had in Chattanooga. And, you know, we just need to be sure that we're not held liable.
Well, there, if, if there's an accident of that magnitude, uh, whether we have insurance or extra insurance or whatever, uh, there's going to be a suit brought because it's going to stop it, start at the top and the ball's, and, and it's going to roll downhill and catch everybody in, in, in a lawsuit. And whether we have insurance or don't, or we have ten million or one million or whatever, lawsuits are going to happen.
Yeah.
Hey, uh, can I jump in real quick, just to explain one thing about the number of buses we have? Because I know there was a question on why we had eighty-something buses on our insurance schedule. Um, okay, we have fifty-six route buses that run every day, okay? We have thirteen contractors that run fifty-six buses. Out of all those contractors combined, they have ten spare buses. Because you have to have spare buses or you can't operate a bus service. Um, our larger contractors, I have anywhere from eight to eleven buses, they have about two spare buses on their lot. Um, some buses, we have seven or eight contractors who have a single bus or two buses. They don't have any spare buses, but they have access to a bus. I've seen lots of times in the last two years where a bus will go down one day and they will go borrow a bus from a larger contract. I don't know what kind of arrangements they make, but they make an arrangement. Um, probably just to put fuel in it, you know, if it's for a day. Last year, we had a contractor, a single bus contractor, whose bus went down for two weeks. He had to go lease a bus for two weeks. So he had to go pay and rent a bus from Knoxville for two weeks or somewhere. Um, so we had fifty-six route buses. We have ten spare buses. That's sixty-six buses. We have our own fourteen sped bus, special education buses. Add that on top. And then we had the two telco activity buses, who's also on that. So as of right now, we have eighty-two, twenty buses on our insurance. So that's where that comes from. Fifty-six plus ten, plus fourteen plus two, that's eighty-two. And I, uh, worked yesterday in the day, took off about six buses that I had listed on the insurance that, that needed to be taken off, and we took those off. So eighty-two buses is what we have insured. I just want to throw that in because I know there's a question on why we had so many buses on our insurance, and that's, that's where that number comes from.
Does, uh, Charlie, uh, does the, as I understand it, the, uh, when the telco got their buses, they had to, they have to have their own insurance? That the county would not even supply, I think the board voted last year not to even let them, uh, supply their insurance. Is that, is that a true fact?
I don't think so. I think we had to insure them because they were in the county's name. Is that right?
I don't know. That, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, that was right. It's, it's, I mean, they're telcos buses, but they're listed on our insurance.
As far as I know, they, they are under our blanket of insurance.
Right, they are.
Okay, so they don't have to put money in for the insurance or?
No, no.
So were, are they paying insurance? Is that what you're saying, Dawn?
That's what I'm asking, uh, because I know there was a, there was considerable, before I was on the board, there was a lot of discussion and I thought it was admirable that they would get their own buses, but the county had voted not even to, uh, you know, supply insurance for them. And they had to buy them and give them to the county, whatever, whatever the process, proper process is and was. I'm, I'm just asking for my own information.
They went in under a fleet of cars, just like all the rest of our cars. They are part of Monroe County. When they were donated to Monroe County, they became property in Monroe County. I think there was a couple of things that we stipulated that we couldn't do because we didn't have the money in the budget to be able to fund, because we weren't prepared to fund their gas. I think we do so much of it. And repairs, I think the repairs, because we had not budgeted for the repairs.
Right, they're, they're responsible for their own repairs.
That's, that sounds reasonable, much like, uh, the ball fields of people done all around the county. Once they done it, they gave it, then it becomes property of the county. Uh, uh, as in the bus too. I know ball fields have been built and people have had to foot the bill and then they give it to the county.
And also, of course, if there are, under Tennessee Risk Management, those telco buses could not be used for anything but school. They couldn't be taking a church trip.
No, correct.
Anything like that, unless they get extra insurance.
They were just activity buses for the school.
Right.
Yes.
Athletics mainly. I don't know if they're used for anything else or not.
So does anyone else have any questions regarding all this?
No, I would just like to, I guess, reiterate what Dr. McClendon said earlier. I would like to get an opinion from our attorney to just to see, just to make sure everything is, um, okay, even in the wording of the contract, uh, that's been brought up over the last few weeks. So that's one thing I would like to see.
Doesn't she do our contracts?
Huh?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question along those lines, Jason. Uh, when this was brought up last year, I mean, this last time when Tennessee Risk Management, this other company, made this presentation, uh, has there not been a legal, uh, statement or whatever proper is used this year, year, uh, years past on this person? Is, has, uh, there not been a legal representation or interpretation made prior to, prior to that?
It has never gotten this in depth before, Dawn.
Okay, so, so last year when we done this, there was no legal interpretation needed? We didn't feel like?
Nope. Well, I, I know last year, I didn't really understand the, the limited li, the, the two million dollar liability that they told us we had. But in that two million, that caps off at two million. And the school would have, could up, have up to, you know, one point three million could be paid out for damages and injuries. And then you would have, uh, you would have only so much left for the, the bus contract. I mean, it did clearly say in those questions that were answered that it, it was limited, that it didn't go over two million. So if it was, they've got a judgment greater than that, it would have to fall to somebody. And I don't know, fall to us or not individually? I don't know.
Isn't that? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Marcia, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just think that maybe that should be our legal, uh, I, I, I agree with Jason. I think that those three things that Deanna mentioned, that, that between now and next week's board meeting, uh, we could get those questions answered at a transportation meeting or, or something. What, what is? Like, I mean, I,
I've interrupted again. I apologize again. I thought you were through. You're breaking up. I, I can't hear.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm through. I'm not saying anything else. I'm done.
Well, it was breaking up and I couldn't tell. Isn't this true with your insurance and my insurance and any insurance? There's a cap on our insurance. There's a cap on all insurance. And it does not matter what the cap is, if there's going to be lawsuits brought. If we've got a cap of one million, two million, or a hundred million, there's going to be lawsuits brought. If there's fifty kids, whatever, that, it's usually going to exceed the cap that is on each person. Or in this situation, our, uh, insurance, there's going to be a cap and, and, uh, you can't, I don't know if you can get enough insurance to, uh, cap the amount of, uh, lawsuits that can be brought.
Well, yeah, but I mean, if you've got a public entity like a school or a government, you know, organization, you can, no court, unless it's a federal court, can rule, you, rule that you get, have to pay more than what the tort cap is. If, I think I'm understanding that.
Hey guys, sorry to interrupt. That was Mr. Rigel on the phone and he's trying to update his, um, um, tablet and get in. You want me to let you know? I'm sorry.
Well, that's, that's what I thought, uh, there on, on that also, Marcia. There's, there's caps being put on public entities for this. Uh, so, uh, the que, only question I would have along those lines, Jason, is, is that, is our cap at the, uh, public maximum? And is there, can it be taken from the legal side over to the civil side and, uh, uh, lawsuits be continued there?
Doris did.
Doris explained.
You know, and she doesn't need to give a sort of a written explanation, but she did say yes. You know, when we had the meeting, uh, I think she verbally had talked to us and she did tell us yes. But I've taken that note. We can ask again and make sure we get it in writing.
I agree. I thought you, I thought that's what she had said.
And just all the contractors I talked to, when I talked to them about the, you know, the caps and stuff, they pretty much all said the same thing in that we understand that there's a catastrophic accident. That it could be sued and, and it could be way over the cap. And, but that's the chance you take of hauling fifty kids down a road. But they all, just like the one question there, I, I asked them, would you be willing to sign a statement acknowledging that? Well, you know, most said yes, but some said, no, there's no reason to sign that. Everybody knows that, you know, that I could go wait, I could be sued for over what my cap is. So why would I need to sign that saying that? That's, I don't, I don't, I'm not going to sign that because I know that. Everybody knows that.
Everybody knows that. Well, Charlie, let me ask you this question. Uh, the buses that we can be sued, uh, is this same type coverage when, uh, uh, we allow parents to drive our children to these athletic events? And that does go on, that they have to sign that they've got the proper insurance, blah, blah, blah? And that's still going to fall back on us, just like it would through the bus drivers. Is that not correct?
I would think so. I believe, is that not five hundred thousand that they have to have?
I, I think that's the, probably the minimum on most insurance you have to have. You've got to have lights and liability and all that. But if it goes over, where's it going to come back to?
Right.
Coming back to?
When I used to, I'm sorry, Dawn, when I used to haul my kids and that's why I took the risk, I had the insurance, but I also knew I could be sued.
Yes. Parents know that. That's, I mean, we've all driven, I, as a coach, have driven, uh, kids thousands of times to, uh, events, scrimmages or ballgames or whatever. And that's a risk you, you take and you knowingly take it. Much like a bus driver.
And, and the concerns Charlie's, uh, seen us and everything that emails, that's what, when I've talked to bus drivers, that's the same feedback I got too, Charlie.
Of course, their biggest concern is if we do switch companies and they don't insure us, what's going to happen? That's what everybody's asking me, what's going to happen? And I, you know, I just, I don't know. That's something I, I can't tell them. But if we do switch and this other company does not cover buses, then there's going to have to be a plan, you know?
Let me jump in here and I think I have shared with a few people that I've checked, had my check-in and calls with. Um, we do not have any money in the budget. For, so there, so what we're paying out or what is in our budget currently is all the money that we have in our budget. So we do not have money to provide any additional stipend to them or to do anything extra than what we're doing right now. Now, of course, and we probably would, and I think Dr. Miller, uh, asked this question. Of course, the savings that we had with one company, could we use that particular money to provide them or help provide them with those, uh, funds to pay the cost themselves? And so I think Sandra is working to get a quote, um, for us. I think that was a question Dr. Miller had. So she has asked them to give a quote on how much it would cost for them to purchase their own.
Hey, you just, you just used the word stipend there, uh, Dr. McClendon. Were you speaking stipends to the bus drivers?
So the question on the table is, if I'm a bus driver and I don't have my, I have to now pay my insurance and I haven't been carrying it, how do I pay for that? And the number one question for bus drivers is, is the district going to give me the money to now cover it if they go with this new insurance? So I said, there is no additional funding to give them any additional money. So I wanted to be very clear on that. The only other way, and I think Dr. uh, Miller and I had a conversation, and he said, could we use the money we saved to then provide that to them to pay for their insurance costs? And we are checking to see how much their insurance cost would be because we know that we're only saving thirty-eight thousand dollars. And we don't know that thirty-eight thousand dollars would be enough enumeration to protect them.
Okay, I have a question. Like if, if they swi, switched the insurance companies and then we did, they did pay for their own insurance, could we not still be liable? They've got their insurance company, but though you could sue them people, then come back and still sue us?
So remember what Doris told us. She said, if there's, this, anything like this ever happens, a person is going to sue the district, they're going to sue the bus company and then they're going to sue, sue the individual bus driver. Now, we will be covered under our umbrella insurance policy. That's where we would be covered.
But if that other insurance company doesn't cover buses at all, are we still covered?
I don't think they cover buses for a contractor. So let's get clarity and make sure that they cover buses for us. I think the problem is they don't, you're not supposed to really carry buses for a contractor, per se.
Well, yeah, and, and my opinion is, a lot of times if something's broke, why, why, you know, leave it be, I mean, thirty-eight thousand dollars, when you go looking at insurance, that's really not that much. Charlie, is this going to cause us to start losing school bus drivers?
Um, it could cause us to lose contractors.
Contractors, that's what I meant to say.
Yeah, I mean, it could. And I've had some say, if, you know, I, I can't afford to buy my insurance, so if they switch and they don't help us out, then I'll have to turn my bus in. And I've had a few say that.
We've already had a rough enough time with this.
Yes, and it's going to be a struggle this coming up, this school year with bus drivers too. It's not getting any better. It's not getting any better. It's so hard to get a driver licensed, to get a CDLS endorsement. Ms. Cooley them had to go to Murfreesboro, drive a bus to Murfreesboro twice just to get one guy certified. And it's just, it's, it's just so, the state has made it so difficult, it's a crisis in the state. It really is, and it's not just, I mean, part of it's your, your low unemployment rate, you know, people could be picky about the job they have, of course, that might, that's changed now, but a lot of it is just the, the state inadversity of just being able to give people license. I mean, you're guaranteed to fail the first time easily.
Hey Charlie, that test has always been hard, even years ago, but has it gotten harder? I mean, is it harder now?
Yes, it's harder, it's a lot harder. They've cracked down and it's just, you know, and it.
Well, I can just remember years ago, I would hear some of the guys say, gosh, I had that test, you know, wore me out. And that was, you know, 15, 20 years ago.
And now they have to know so much about the bus too and the parts, don't they, on that test? They have, almost been mechanic.
Yep.
It's a very hard test.
Very hard. And the closest place you can go is Strawberry Plains and nobody goes there because they, they're notorious for failing. You can go there five times. So a lot of our people are going all the way to Murfreesboro. They'll still fail, drive back and then drive back over there again, maybe pass it the second time. Of course, every time you're driving over there, you've got to take two people, of course. And it's a lot of fuel to go to Murfreesboro and back just to get a license, so it's, they're behind the eight ball big time, they really are.
So why don't we have a transportation meeting next Thursday night before our board meeting with the bus drivers? And maybe get these questions answered by an attorney, by Doris. And then we can decide at our board meeting which insurance company we go with.
Is it going to be a work session or Zoom?
Um. Well, that was what I was going to ask you all tonight, we could probably, if everybody would be agreeable, we could have a meeting here at central office and they can kind of set us apart from one another. It would just be the board and then we could let the bus drivers come in one at a time and speak.
You'll have 13 contractors. You're looking at 13. If everybody shows up.
Well, if one or two of those contractors could speak, all the contractors that would, you know, if they could.
I think it'd be the best way to have each and everyone, to have everyone's opinion.
Well, we could do that, but we got about 30 minutes because right after that, we need to have a work session regarding the charter school.
Yeah, I still think every contractor needs to.
Or we could start at 4 o'clock.
Good, as a suggestion right here, Charlie is over the transportation, I don't know why he can't meet with all the contractors and get all their pros and cons and make a presentation to the board and speak as, as one right there, because that could, that could get, that could get long and laborious.
That's a good point.
I'm open to suggestions.
Charlie, you willing to do that?
Oh, yes, yes. I've already talked to most of them, but I, I will talk to them again though. Each one. Definitely.
And we probably need Doris's opinion on these questions so they will know an unbiased attorney legal opinion that we've asked her, so we will know that information along with them and so they will know upfront and foremost.
Well, that's, when Charlie speaks with them, he can relay that to Doris and, and get that all handled before we come together.
That will be fine with me, is that okay with everybody else?
Yes.
Yes.
Sharon?
I said yes.
I couldn't hear you, Joe.
Yeah. And Tom.
Where's Janie Harold?
She's trying to get logged in. She's having some problems logging in.
What about you, DeWitt?
Yes.
Okay. Marsha?
Yes, yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay.
What time did you all agree on?
She is wanting to start this work session at 5 o'clock because we'll have this, the transportation with the bus drivers and then right after that, we need to go in with the charter schools. And then our board meeting starts at 6:30.
Why would that take an hour and a half if Charlie's going to have all this condensed down into that? And this charter school, why would that, why would we need an hour and a half? That's going to get laborious.
The charter school will probably be laborious. It will take the longest, probably. Have you looked at that packet that they've sent out to us?
Yes.
So our, so our plan with the charter school will be to invite the person there, we'll take their amendments they've attached, we'll help to create some questions and then Ms. Strickland will actually ask those particular questions. You guys can ask the board others and we will be prepared, you guys can be prepared to hear their responses so you can have an informed opinion. So probably when, I, I would bet a good 45, 50 minutes on that.
So now, if I understood this correctly, are you saying there's going to be a representative of them to come and present this and Ms. Strickland? Or is that the same person?
Ms. Strickland works for us. We will ask a representative to come and respond to the questions, they won't do a presentation. They will come and respond to the questions.
So Mr. Gaffney might be there?
We will invite him to come and respond to the questions.
And you all need to be thinking about questions, you need to be asking him. And give those to Dr. McClendon or Leanne and so they can put them together to ask.
We'll be working on those on, on Saturday. And so hopefully by Monday close of business, we will have the questions that we thought of to you guys and in that way, that might spur some more questions in your mind that you'd like us to include.
So are we doing in person or as Zoom?
In person. We can do in person and it will just be the board there and then Mr. Gaffney will be invited in and then Charlie will come in for the bus drivers. We can do it in person if that's okay with everybody and if you don't.
How do you feel about that?
Say again.
Do you, can you, would you feel okay about coming to an in live board meeting? I know the last time you had some issues, I just want to make sure you're okay with it.
Well, I'll wear my mask and I'll say, do what the CDC says, distancing and everything. So if that goes by the guidelines, that's all right with me, laws will go by the guidelines.
And if anybody thinks about it and wants to, we'll have, we do have a way to set you up to, and Skype is not the correct word, but we have a way to put you in the room and you be able to be a part of the meeting. So if you'll let me know that you would prefer to stay home and just sign in from home and participate that way, we had two people do that at a principal meeting. It's not best case scenario, but we can do it.
Is that okay?
I just, I'm just cautious with the grandbaby, I do have to work, but we have guidelines we follow too, so, you know, I'm willing if that's what we're following, I'm wearing my mask like DeWitt says.
I mean, we can do it by Zoom, I don't have no problem doing it with Zoom. I mean, by the governor's order, we can continue to do this until June the 30th. So it's up to you all how you want to do it. I'm going to leave that up to y'all this time.
Well, we did the last one by Zoom, I wouldn't say no issues with doing this one by Zoom.
Y'all want to do it by Zoom, that's fine with me.
That sounds good to me.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, that's fine, I, I don't care either way.
So we'll just invite the people that want us, that Charlie will do his presentation, we'll have it geared up. We will also send Mr. Gaffney a link. You guys will ask the questions or we'll have one person ask the question, we'll have him respond and then we'll have others. If you have other questions, you'll just jump in and ask those additional questions. We can do it that way.
So we'll do a Zoom meeting next Thursday starting at 5 and then at 6:30 will be our board meeting. So let's move along to the CEF board evaluation. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Okay, the meeting management assessment. I'm going to start with the questions. Board meeting facilities provided the best environment for board meetings, we scored a 3. The board meeting provided seating arrangements which allowed the board business to be conducted openly to the public, we scored a 3. New items of a complex nature not on the agenda were not introduced for action, we scored a 3. Anytime I need to stop or anybody have a question, do so.
Well, I'll just ask, hey Sonia?
Yes.
I'll just ask on those, I wonder what would have gotten us a 4, I mean, I, I didn't see any comments there, so, and maybe, nobody may be able to answer that question, but I was just kind of curious myself, so. I mean, I've not attended another board meeting to know the difference, we're, except for county commission on occasion, but I, I don't know what would have given us a 4 in those areas. Does anybody else know possibly?
We can reach back out to those particular board members who participated and ask them to give us specific feedback to what would have gotten us to 4. I mean, they may not respond, but we could ask them.
Okay.
Each agenda item had appropriate amount of time allocated to it, we scored a 4. Routine agenda items were acted upon through a consent agenda, we scored a 4. Arrangements are made for appropriate media access to board meetings, we scored a 3. Number 7, the board had written policies for conducting meetings which allow the public to be heard but prevent anyone from dominating or disrupting its meeting, we scored a 2 with no public comment section. An annual agenda is used to ensure important items are addressed at the appropriate time. And they said not sure of past meetings, so we made no score there. The items on the agenda reflect the current needs of the system as well as long range planning and issues around student achievement, we scored a 3. Board members made informed comments and asked appropriate questions regarding agenda items, we scored a 3. On number 11, agenda items were reviewed and any changes in priority are set by the board as it adopted the agenda, we scored a 4. Closure on agenda item was obtained before the board moved to the next item, we scored a 2. And budget issues was under the comment. The board chairman truly ran the meetings and controlled the length of discussion in a timely fashion, I scored a 2. So maybe we need to shorten everything, I guess, I don't know. The board guarded against consuming meeting with administrative details, time and energy was used for important governance issues, policymaking, planning and promotion, we scored a 2. Budget items not thoroughly vetted and settled before vote, not sure everybody is on, is of one thoughtful concession.
It's on one thought out concessions.
I'm not sure what that or conscience?
Conscience, yeah. I don't know.
I'm not really sure what they're referring to there. Can you check on that one too, Dr. McClendon?
So I have some commentary because I actually did ask about those and so when you get through, would you like me to address it now or would you like for me when we get to the end?
Just wait till we get to the end and then you can go back to those, okay? Number 15, in discussing the agenda items, board threw the problems and their causes before reaching decisions, we scored a 2. When issues came up in the meeting, they were thoroughly explored until everyone understood the issue, we scored a 3. The board withheld definite board action until after the superintendent's recommendation was presented, we scored a 2. Decisions were in accord with full discussion and deliberation so that all members had full attention paid to their point of view, we scored a 3. The board made timely decisions even when controversy was inedible, we made a 3, budget questions. The board attempted to arrive at decisions which express a consensus before formalized votes were taken, we scored a 3. When a decision was made, it was clear who we carried out and when, we scored a 2. Board members strive to work closely together as a board and avoided negative political practices such as alliances, trade offs, et cetera, we scored a 2. Not sure, obviously, a little bit of conflict among the board. All board members were involved in, in attention to the business being discussed, we scored 3. Board members kept their comments or questions focused on the agenda items under discussion, 3. Board members use the board meeting time for genuine discussion and problem solving, 3. The board chairman made certain all board members had equal opportunity to present their views, we scored 3. The board assured interested parties that matters brought to their attention would be taken under consideration and a report would be forthcoming at a later date, 3. Responsibility for staff action was recorded for appropriate in the board minutes, we scored 3. Summary of meeting management assessment for the school system. We do a public comment section. Board of Distinction Board Meeting Evaluation. Informed, School Board evaluated, Menor County, Placed, Board of Education Office. That's just who I was there and y'all seen that. And I think I've done, see, is this another one preparation for the meeting, board meeting facilities? Is that the same that I've just seen?
That's the other guy, remember there were two people?
Two, so there's two separate ones here.
Yeah, and I was there, did he just not list everybody that was there or just listed the ones he knew?
He may have just listed the ones.
Yeah, he may have just listed the ones he knew or could see their tag. He might could have seen, because where they were sitting, he might not have been able to see your placard.
So the second guy, instead of me reading all of these on the first page, I'm going to just say we scored a 3 on all, all of his. Number 7, he didn't score us. It said it was not provided. An annual agenda is used to ensure important items are addressed at the appropriate time. Didn't score us, said it was not provided. Number 9, the items on the agenda reflect the current needs of the system as well as long range planning and issues, he gave us a 3 with a question mark. Number 10, board members made informed comments, we've got a 3. Number 11, operation in the meetings under agenda eyes were reviewed and any changes in priority are set by the board, we got a 2. Closure on agenda item was obtained before the board moved to the next item, 3. Board chair truly ran the meetings, controlled the length of time, still got a 2. The board guarded against consuming meetings with administrative details, time and energy, we scored a 2. In discussing agenda items, we scored a 2. When issues came up in the meetings, they were thoroughly explored until everyone understood the issue. When issues came up in the meetings, they were thoroughly explored until everyone understood the issue. We scored a one and C note below. And I'm not sure I can read all his writing. It says Menor County Board of Education. Has a new director eight months as well as several new board members. A budget proposal has recently been developed but not fully understood by the board. The new director not yet fully understanding the financial history of the district is having difficulty from some board members. The board budget recommendation finally was passed. Seventeen, the board withheld definite board action until after the superintendent's recommendation was presented. At, we scored a one. Number eighteen, we scored a three. Decisions were in accord with full discussion. Number nineteen, the board made timely decisions even when controversy was inevitable. Three. The board attempted to arrive at decisions when express a consensus before formalized votes were taken. We scored a three. And when a decision was made, it was clear who should carry it out. We scored a three. Number twenty-two, board members strive to work closely together. We scored a three. Twenty-three, all board members were involved and attended to business being discussed. We scored a three. Board members kept their comments or questions. We scored a three. Board members use the board meeting time for genuine discussion. We scored a three. Board chairman made certain all board members had equal opportunity to present their views. We scored a two. The board assured interest parties that matters brought to their attention would be taken. Under consideration and a report would be forthcoming. We scored a two. Responsibility for staff action was recorded for appropriate in the board minutes. Did that say not provided?
Not provided. And I don't know, Ms. Blair, did they even, did they ask you for a copy of those?
They did not.
Okay.
But they're all online. They could have accessed it.
And under recommendation one, the director and board need to continue working on a better understanding of the budget, particularly to help new board members. Recommendation two, public comment. Do you not provide opportunity for the public to speak? You're missing an opportunity to develop a broader base of support. And that was Dr. Gary. I can't read his.
Oobin, I think.
Okay.
I think that's something.
So, so I'll go back.
Something we could.
Oh, oh, the public comment section, and that was very new and different for me. Um, one of the things that I know that you guys do when people ask to speak before you guys, y'all just place them on the agenda. So we probably, when we are reviewed by the next group, we probably need to make sure that they know that people are provided an opportunity um to speak at our board meetings. Um, you know, they just request and they speak.
But. We still require them to call and get on the agenda. We don't allow them to extemporaneously speak. What board member, what school boards do that?
Well, the two.
I think Loudoun does.
And the two boards I, two or three boards I worked for before, they did too, but we don't have a system of security and other things. So I wonder is that why you guys do things differently? Does anybody have any historical knowledge of that?
We have, we have SRO officers there at every meeting. But uh, and that, that would provide security if we wanted to do that. I just don't know that. That we want to get into that and taking up a lot of time. Of course, we have a policy that we don't allow them so many minutes. To speak. Even when they request and get on the agenda. So I don't know for. Opening ourselves up or why.
We do that to shorten the agenda somewhat. That's why we request them to come on, so we don't keep public out all night.
We can make sure that we share that moving forward. We can, we can make sure that when the next group comes in to evaluate, we'll let them know that it's just as simple as writing a request or sending an email to request and that they can speak.
Right.
Does anyone else have any comments?
So do you want me to go back and address the other thing?
Yes.
Okay. So I know that early on and we, and uh, I know that we had some people that weren't able to attend. We had a very honest dialogue when we had our team building and we had TSBA come in uh, with Dr. Tammy Grisham. Uh, one of the things that is shared is even if we, even if the vote is not all the same. You have to be one team and one mind. You can have a conflict or you can have a disagreement, but you still have to be of one mind and work as a team. So from an outsider, it looks like our board was uh. Very political. Uh, that there were agendas that were going on and that we were ill, that the board had been ill-informed concerning the budget. So their question to me was, did I have uh, an opportunity uh, in regards to Mr. Weiss? To have had a meeting and establish a connection and some information to him. Because he was a new board member and he seemed to have uh, numerous questions about the uh, agenda. And they asked me, how had we done that? And I did explain to them that we did do a complete board presentation. Uh, that Mr. Weiss did, did have to unfortunately leave during that complete. Presentation when most of you were able to ask most questions. Um, they asked me, did I follow up with him and have a meeting? And I did. Uh, Ms. Blair and I did meet with Mr. Weiss um. For two or three hours the Tuesday before the board meeting. Is that correct, Ms. Blair? I see you shaking your hand. Um, I think their expectation was. If given opportunities and there was a presentation and there was a conversation or a meeting of two or three hours. Then the expectation was even if there were additional questions, that board members should be able to come back up repeatedly. So that we don't get into board meetings and we have these, I gotcha or surprises. So it seems like um, I've gotten some hidden or I gotten a secret or I wanna expose something. And I get to the board meeting and I say, aha. Why didn't you give us more information about that? And that is, that is discouraged. Um, because you should be able to have a free flow of information. You should have numerous questions. I should be uh, meeting with you and giving them to you verbally or in written format. And so that way, any additional information or, or things should occur. Now, will there be times when you want to bring up points or thoughts you have during the board meeting? Absolutely. But it uh, it, it, it did not look good for us. And it goes back to the training that we received as a um, board initially in August. Uh, and I know that we spent probably two hours or longer because you guys had even conducted a self-evaluation. And in the self-evaluation, some of these same comments um, actually were brought up in the self-evaluation. Uh, if you recall. And I think there was agreement between the board to move forward very differently. Uh, and we, we, I, I wanna commend my board and say I think we've done well for a while. But I think that uh, we lost some of that in this meeting. And unfortunately, that was in a time when we were having outside observations.
Are they coming back to see us?
So, so we'll have a different group. So for us to become a board of a distinction, we've got to get better. And maybe we won't, we're probably not gonna make it this time, but now we, we know, just like my evaluation, now we know. What is required or what it, what we need to establish. And so we will have a different group uh, from Lenore City to come in. Sandra, when are they scheduled to come into our next meeting? In July?
They were supposed to have been here in May. We haven't heard any from them since the COVID nineteen, so we'll follow up with them.
So we'll follow up and get a new time. And then as we do check-in meetings or we have calls, we can talk more about, about that. And, and it might be a good idea that I ask Dr. Grisham to come in and remind us of the guidance. Uh, we may need to reshare uh, some of the self-evaluation things um, that you guys shared initially. Uh, we. I know there had been some contention on the board. Uh, and I, I felt like we were moving in the right direction, but, but I will be honest in that we have lost our way in the last. Uh, maybe couple of months.
In, in what way, in what way are you indicating there's been a lost way? Uh, because uh, people have difference uh, of opinion and it's certainly not uh, political that I can see. Uh, so where's your indication coming from? That we've lost our way?
So I don't think that they um, I don't, I think Dr. Grisham was very clear that you can have a difference of opinion. Um, I think what she encouraged us all. Uh, is to have a format and of a way to be prepared for your meetings. Um, to ask questions ahead of time and get documentation and answers. And then if you have those questions, you know, bring them up in the meeting. Uh, you don't wanna be, be a dead horse, but I, I will be honest and that is, you know, that was. You know, our evaluation, it, it did seem like there were agendas. And I'll be honest and say, at times, um, I have as your director. Felt like there have been agendas outside my knowledge. So I'm just being transparent in that there's got to be a professional way. So maybe we need some additional board training. That would be my recommendation is you self-evaluate it that there's, there are some issues. Uh, you had an outsider to evaluate that we have some issues. Maybe prior to us asking Lenore City to come in and evaluate us. Maybe we need to reach back out to TSBA and Dr. Grisham and get some additional training. Uh, you know, we would do that if we were sports team. We would do that if we were a student. We'd get some more training. We'd get some more tutoring. We'd get some more information. And I think that's, that's probably what I would, would recommend.
So do we make the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think if everybody came prepared, if there were any questions that needed to be asked and there was anything that needed to be clarified. If we'd get that done before the meeting so that we can come to the meeting and move forward instead of just backtracking to answer questions. We need to get those things squared away and come to the meeting prepared. I've said that before. If you don't understand it, pick up the phone and call and set up an appointment with Dr. McLendon or uh, to get it explained to you. There's no reason in wasting everybody's time going through a series of questions about stuff that you should have already prepared yourself with.
Hey, Dr. McLendon? Mr. Weiss, were you able to attend the new board member training?
I have uh, attended one, yes I have.
Okay. Cause sometimes that helps. I think that helps too.
And my thing is too, somebody might ask the question that you didn't know or didn't catch, and so that leads to another question. So we do have to ask questions unless we wanna have thirty minutes before every meeting and go over everything and then have a cut and dry board meeting, but. You know, that's what our meetings are for, to ask questions also.
That's, that's true, Joe, but there's no sense in, in not coming prepared or better prepared. Let me put it that way. And I can see that that's happened.
I can, just like everybody else does.
I, I think that one thing I need to do just as a director, I think is my responsibility. I need to reach out to you guys. Uh, several days and I do, I email it and I, I uh, call some, but I don't wanna be a pest. Cause that was one thing that came out in our board retreat, but I think I should give everybody just one last opportunity. Let me, you guys prefer texts. I probably just need to text each one individually and just say, uh, maybe two days beforehand, is there anything that I could do or any questions that you have that I can furnish you with factual information? Uh, that is happening. And that would be, that way you could come with that in hand. And even if it was a point, you say, I reviewed this information and I see on this particular line. There's this number of buses and why are we paying overage? I see the answer to that and then see how Charlie was able to respond to that. So it, it, I think it goes back to uh, preparation. I think that what Ms. Harold says about preparation, we've got to be prepared. And that means I've got to get your questions and make sure that I am preparing you to have all the necessary information you need. So you can make an informed uh, decision. And I think the meeting, to that point, at the meeting, it is probably too late to try to inform you as deeply as you need to be. Uh, some of those things, it, it's very apparent. That's a question that should, that needs to be asked early on and I need to give you an answer. Uh, having an answer prepared or a document with evidence prepared prior to. And, and I, I wish some of the board members who were at the retreat, I wish you guys maybe would speak up or speak up about the evaluation. I think uh, Dr. Miller and, and um, Mr. Upton, I know you guys talked, had, you know, quite a lot to say or some dialogue to say when we had that retreat at the beginning.
Well, yeah, I, I agree with what's been said. I mean, I think everybody, including myself, can it improve? Um, I don't think you can ever prepare enough and there's always something that you're probably not gonna be prepared for. Uh, but still, we have at times, um, all of us have gotten bogged down with things that probably if we would have been a little bit more prepared, that we wouldn't have got bogged down by. And it takes time and it is, as is mentioned earlier, it is uh, laborious to, to sit there and it seems like we just spin our foot wheels sometime and. And again, I'm just as, as guilty as, as anyone. Uh, but that is something that we can all improve on, I believe, with me included. Uh, is to be a little bit more prepared and also uh, just try to, you know, when I look at a meeting, I was like, well, what could possibly be asked? You know, that I might need to prepare myself for and, and sometimes it seems like, you know. Uh, there's always something to ask that I'm not prepared for, but anyways. Um, you know, again, I think we all can improve uh, as far as preparation and, and just overall the way we conduct ourselves, so. Which I think is, is pretty good, but you know, I do think a lot of that bogged down is, is uh, sometimes we do speak over each other and, and I think we can all improve with that as well.
We, we need to stop chasing, I guess the term, chasing rabbits or whatever you wanna call it and. You know, just like what Janie said, I mean, call director, we got a problem, like we study the agenda or whatever and, and ask certain questions. And then if you don't clear it up properly, then we maybe can ask the public or whatever, so. People's business more, that's what we need to do.
I agree with all of what y'all said. I know when I first got on the board. I needed to go and get a hard copy of the agenda so that I could look through it, read it, make notes on it. And uh, I've gotten a little better using my iPad, but at first I had to really study it because there was so much I did not understand. And uh, I still have issues about things. We talk about that I have to reflect on, but the times I have had questions, uh, Dr. McLendon has generally cleared me up. So I, I think we're all, I think we can all do better. I do. And maybe, just maybe act a little more respectfully to each other.
I've also got room for improvement, so. Anybody needs to slow me down, I will not take offense in any way. If you're to say, whoa Sonia, wait up. So I have no issues with that.
I think, I agree with you all that we all could do a little better. But also we have new fellow board members and I think we should be a little more patient with them. And not get so frustrated and just rush them off because they're trying to understand things. When I was a new board member, nobody tells you everything. I mean. It's like Joe said, there's gonna be some things come up that you don't understand or make you ask another question. I just think that we all could do a little bit better too.
Uh, Ms. Lynn, I, I noticed another thing and I heard you kinda take that, that hard a little bit and, and it said, control the meeting. Uh, and, and I think the feedback on that was, you know, you're the chairman and you are in control. And if people are continuing to berate an issue or ask the question over and over again or bring it back, I think they want you to hit that gavel. So I think as a board, we have to accept. She's gonna hit the gavel and we gotta be out of our feelings and she's gonna move us along or get some order. Uh, and I think she's a southern lady and you know, it's hard for us to speak up.
Uh, and I think she's a southern lady and, you know, it's hard for us to speak up and, uh, and do that. But I, I don't want you to take that hard because I think you try to be respectful and let everybody speak and say what they want to. Uh, and I think what they're saying is it's your meeting, Madam Chairman, and you are going to have to run that meeting and, uh, few people are out of order. You're going to have to hit your gavel on them.
I try to be respectful of everybody, but if that's what I need to do, I guess that's what I'll have to do. So, I hope no one takes offense and leaves it at the boardroom when we leave.
Well, I've asked to be on the board agenda and I'll just go ahead and tell you is because, you know, we are board members and our opinion does matter. And when we're discuss, in discussion, we all go get intense and we jump ahead of each other. I think when we have discussion, each board member should be asked, do you have anything to say in order? That way, it's more thorough. Instead of us all trying to say something at once or jumping ahead the other and then, then nobody gets to finish their questions. This happens a lot, so it's very frustrating sometimes when we have discussion.
Joe, I think you're really supposed to say, you know, instead of like being in the classroom and raising your hand, I think you're supposed to, Madam Chairman, and, and indicate that you have something to say.
And then at that point, I can recognize you. Sorry.
Not everybody gets to because then we'll call the question too. I've called the question. There's been several, but I, I think to respect each board member during this, uh, discussion that we ought to let each board member speak as respect.
So, here is, um, uh, most boards, especially large boards like ours, they actually have a system with a light system. And what happens is you hit that button and then the chairman can see at their seat who has been asked in the order they came in. And then they can call you one by one and cut that light off. And I know right now we don't, maybe we have, hopefully, maybe some money, maybe we don't. But let, could I get some prices to see because it sounds like you guys might want to use that system?
Well, that's just an extra cost to us when we're trying to save. I mean, we're all right there. She could ask us and if someone does, okay, each one of us raise our hand and then go down the line instead of spending money when we can do it that way.
So, we need to check into parliamentary procedure to see if that's the way that's supposed to flow. I'll be honest, I've, I've never seen, I've, I promise I've never seen that where, you know, not to, not to not provide an opportunity, but just for parliamentary procedure, uh, we may want to just check into that system. I don't know. Maybe someone has one they'd like to donate.
Well, maybe, and then maybe we just do it like we've always been doing, jump in when you can. Maybe that's the way it's supposed to be.
I think your observation is correct though, Ms. Cagle. We need a better system.
Now, you're supposed to be ra, recognized by the chairman. You're supposed to ask for recognition from the chairman before you speak. You're not supposed to jump in. And I know we've all done that, but, but I think that's really according to Robert's Rules of Orders, which we don't really follow that distinctly and, you know, correctly. And we, we just assume that we're going basically by them, uh, because there's a lot of things that we do that aren't, aren't really going along with Robert's Rules of Order. But still, yet, you are supposed to indicate that you want to be recognized by the chairman before you speak.
We get too casual, I mean, in the running.
We do, we do. And, and some of that has been my fault. Maybe I should have called it a hand before now, but I guess from this point on, we can work on that and do better.
We could even do some kind of system, even if we, we find we can't afford one. Maybe there's a cup or something and you put your flag or your stick in there and then she'd know to be able to recognize you. Can, can we work, could we work on, could you give me a chance to work on that just a little bit and for, see what we could come up with, please?
That's a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
You'll start with raise, Madam Chairman? Does she recognize? Everybody want to raise their hand? If two people raise their hand, it's up to Chairman to recognize who raised it first or whatever. Madam Chairman.
Right.
I disagree or agree with this and that, whatever. It can be worked out, I think.
And we can work that out. So, does anyone else have anything?
Do you think that I need to reach back out to TSBA to see if there's some sort of training or some sort of online, something that we could do to help us before we call the next group in?
See if there is some, I would like to hear, see if there's something online that, you know, maybe Tammy could zoom in with us one afternoon or something. That's my thoughts.
And critique us or something, yeah, critique us on that.
Does anybody else have anything?
I'd say TSBA has got some, some things online that, that would, that could help as far as, you know, just how to conduct the meeting and how, how board members are supposed to react and so forth and so on.
Reach out to Ms. Grisham.
We have a policy.
I don't think we're going against policy. I think it's more about, um, consensus building and team building and climate and culture. And when she came earlier in the year, it was great. People really liked it. So, so I'll reach out to her and see if she can get something for you again on Zoom. Is that what I hear you, what guys want me to do?
Either Zoom or online, something that we could just go to and look at. That's my thoughts.
Yes, ma'am.
If she's going to zoom in with us, maybe it should be after the election. That way, if there's new board members, that would be a good thing for them to sit through.
I think we should do both and the reason why, we have lots of things getting ready to come up on the agenda as we get ready to open schools. Uh, we, she may not be able to get us anything, but I still would like to pose the question if it's the will of the group and the reason why you've got some important things coming before you, um, that will be critical. And she can't, we've called attention to it, but if she has something and she could help us, I'm never afraid to ask for help.
I think that's a good idea because the next two months, we, there's a lot of things, um, that I have to make decisions on.
So, does anyone else have anything? If not?
Sonya, hold on just a minute. I just looked up on my iPad. On, uh, last Friday, there is a communication saying some TSBA and it has some podcasts on it. And one of them is, uh, the top ten things all school board members need to know. But there's a whole bunch of other things. There's one called open meetings. And, um, let's see, um, ask the attorneys. And, uh, I think I saw Robert's Rules of Order on here. So, you could go to that, to, to your, uh, iPad and pick that up and scroll through those podcasts and see if there's anything there that you think, you know, you might be interested in listening to, that, that might help. Because there may be some stuff on there that we really need to look into that we've been discussing about.
Janie, I listened, I listened to that top ten things that board members should know. Very, very interesting and ten things that we ought to do. And it's part of what we've been talking about right now. You can listen to that on your phone. It's, uh, it's easy to click and get that connection, that link here.
Does anyone else have anything?
I'd just like to say, I, I just, uh, want to thank everyone for the prayers. And I ask for your prayers from me and my family. I'm having some difficult times. I just really appreciate y'all and, uh, everybody stay safe and, uh, love y'all guys.
We love you too, DeWitt.
Love you, DeWitt.
Love you too.
If there's nothing else, remember the work session next Thursday at five o'clock, the board meeting at six-thirty. And I think, Dr. McClendon, you're going to be sending us some stuff out on Monday afternoon. So, everybody look at that and you have any questions for, uh, the charter school, then be sure and get with Dr. McClendon and see if we can get all that together. And I appreciate y'all coming tonight and we'll see you next Thursday night.
See y'all, stay safe.